Well, good morning, Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Frederick. Good morning and Happy Mother’s Day.
Happy Mother’s Day.
If you are a mother, a spirit of the earth, that has some way been given a nurturing role in this moment, in our time, would you please stand? Let us acknowledge you this morning. Let’s give them around. You can start my slides. As many of you know, I am a practicing artist researcher, and I currently have an exhibition here entitled “Being Led by This Spirit.” I am honored to speak at this beautiful faith-based campus, at least some two weeks after your plant sales, on this auspicious day, as our nation has come to call Mother’s Day. The bright morning vistas that beckon one to take in the gardens here and meditative spaces here remind us that your congregation members are an earth-honoring people. Mothers historically play an important role in shaping both our faith heritage and our relationship to the earth. I salute all the mothers here and within the sound of my voice, as you continue to impart us this vital blueprint of learning how to love. Thad Jones’ composition “A Child Is Born,” that preceded my remarks here, brings into sharp focus the miracle inhale and exhale of mothers that bridged the first breaths of our children into the world. They are indeed opening songs. Mothers direct us to openings in the spirit, the heart and the mind. A mother’s teacher centered on a respect for the earth while instilling the importance of faith heritage might be seen as a sort of opening hymn. Author Anna Maleka Tubbs’ book takes up the sentiment in her book entitled “The Three Mothers: How the Mothers of Martin Luther King, Malcolm X., and James Baldwin Shaped a Nation.” She asserts that there is a paradoxical relationship between the dehumanization of black women and their children, and how they face their ability to resist it. I employ in my work this idea of eco-womanism, a theological approach in my writing. Echo-memory refers to the collective and individual memory of the earth and our relationship with it. I honor my mother, Annie Pearl Wilkins, on this Mother’s Day, and my husband’s mother, Shirley Elizabeth Ambush, and the mothers of her ancestral roots, whose name from the time of enslavement to the times in which we live were preserved in such a way that they could be passed on and recalled and celebrated. For instance, my son Malcolm Ambush is the great-great-grandson of Henrietta Hudson, whose name you could easily find in our family papers, a family tree that has somehow miraculously survived. She was born in slavery to her African-American parents, Peter and Dinah Branch. Mothers’ names begin to flow on this family tree, generations transitioning from the cruel institution of slavery into our contemporary culture. The African-American experience of motherhood from enslavement to recent times, this Mother’s Day, continues to be plagued by systems of oppression, violence, persistence of caste. Ask the mothers of George Floyd, who lost her son four years ago yesterday. Ask the mothers of slain Air Force Airman Roger Fortson, slain while opening the door of his apartment in a case of wrong address, or emergency medical technician Breonna Taylor, accountant Botham Jean. Mother’s Day is another unwelcome haunting of the perniciousness of Jim Crow legacies and a renewed call for justice that has existed since lynching of young black men. I have been invited to speak this Mother’s Day on the topic of the 70th anniversary of the Brown versus Board of Education Supreme Court case ruling that the doctrine of separate but equal is unconstitutional, and that was done in 1954, May 17. The Supreme Court unanimously ruled that public school segregation was unconstitutional and must cease. It seems to me that the task here this morning is to bring the lens of motherhood to this narrative. I will offer you this morning as well the lens of our relationship to the earth. The original Prince Edward County desegregation lawsuit was Davis versus the Board of Education. It was filed in May 1951, and it was the Supreme Court that consolidated with four other cases under the same Brown versus Board of Education. Author Christopher Bonasta contends that white county leaders there in Prince Edward County believed they were creating a blueprint for resisting desegregation, a natural state of free, of racial terror. They were the evolution in thinking of the nonexistence of the education of blacks. When Lee surrendered at Appomattox, Grant had already passed through Farmville to receive his surrender in 1865. Free public schools in the state of Virginia were being planned for and come into fruition some five years later as a segregated system. William Edward Bohart DuBois described Prince Edward County at the turn of the century as an irregular quadrangle about 200 miles situated in what is called the Black Belt, with Farmville serving as the county seat. In 1898, there were approximately 2,500 residents, and DuBois described Farmville as a rural market town where tobacco was the main crop, for whom a century ago had a population of 8,000, which were evenly divided with blacks and whites. A system of axiological and ontological distinctly different values between blacks largely manifested, blacks and whites, in their religious practices. Scholars referred to the notion of slave religion, which paralleled the system of slavery, as a system of subjugation, employing scripture as a means in which control could reinscribe master-slave relationships. My great-grandparents’ children’s farmhouse possessions actually served to document for us in this generation the earliest writings of my family, as Henrietta Hudson, practicing her name in an 1872 writing book, writes her gratitude to the schoolteacher who has gifted this book. She had a value for education, and it’s already imprinted in the actions my ancestors take to secure better lives for themselves. Remarkably, Henrietta and Jeff Hudson raised 17 children, and as these images that I share with you this morning indicate, they are using the new art form of photography to make declarative statements about their own value and their own worth. A remarkable collection of pictures relate a love for the land that they incredulously own, some 81 acres in a post-Reconstructionist world. This family keepsake, the pictures that I show, the family keepsakes, the art that I make, bring us more insight into the developing circumstance of African-American mothers in Prince Edward County at the turn of the century. DuBois documents that in 1898, there are no schools for colored children, other than attending the schools Virginia Seminary in Lynchburg, a colored Baptist church, Virginia Normal and Collegiate Institute in Petersburg, Harzhorn Memorial College in Richmond, Hampton Institute Hampton, Ingleside Seminary in Berksville. Four of the daughters of John Henry Hudson, who I call Jeff Hudson, would attend all of the schools that I name, and we know this because of the things that they purposely reserve in their trunk. And a thread of continuity emerges from these papers, saved by Henrietta, the daughter of slaves and the wife of a freeman, John Hudson, instills a value earlier on for education, particularly in his four daughters, and ensures that education as a social mechanism gives them some measure of agency in a fastly concretizing system of Jim Crow. John Henry Hudson, Jeff Hudson’s deep respect for the practical wisdom of instilling values in his family of 17 children include what theologian Peter Paris describes as “a natural cohesion of the family, including the underlying presence of maternal bonding; deep respect for the practical wisdom of the elderly; the power of the elderly to bless and curse; deference of the younger to the older siblings; and the responsibility of the latter to the former; unquestioned obedience to the authority of parents and the elderly; belief in life after death and the reunion of the entire family with God in the spirit world.” This is important in setting the context for the personal relevance of the events surrounding the Brown decision in the household of my great-grandfather, John Henry Jeff Hudson and Henrietta Hudson, as a generational legacy. It helps explain their membership in First Baptist Church there in Farmville, a social activism nucleus. African-American mothers had to implant places in their children’s being for dreaming and imagining a liberatory existence in the face of oppression. In the essay “The African Experience of God Through the Eyes of an Akon Woman,” Mercy Otudue describes the name of God as Nana, the good parent, the grandparent, and she explains that others would say that Nana is God, Nana is mother, Nana is father, but the sentiment is the same. Nana is the source of loving, kindness, and protection. The Africans’ connection, some say he is father, some say she is mother, but the sentiment is the same. Nana is the source of loving kindness and protection. Nana is depicted as Kandile, an Orisha who is the beginning of life. Ottawa gives a description of African women’s connection to the earth as divine parent. Several letters from the farmhouse addressed specifically to Henrietta, instructing her about what to plant, seem to acknowledge this African worldview as an African woman’s descendant connection to the earth. Ottawa says, “God’s sustenance and beneficience are seen in the rain and in the sunshine.” The 17 letters that we found in our family trunk farmhouse, left to be read and cherished by the descendants of John Henry and Henrietta, are divine openings to spiritual centers that sustain the Hudson’s. It’s foundational in the social action that they will then take in the following generations. They undertake in a separate but equal unequal society. They are loving these letters that we find in this trunk and reflect great deference to these parents. They indicate a fervor for education. In some total, I have attempted here initially in my talk with you today to establish for you a picture of at least one African-American household and enjoining value system that predates the 1951 social justice response to the tar-paper shacks that would shamefully constitute the schooling facilities deemed normal and appropriate for African-American children in a segregated society. You see, the 13th, 14th, and 15th amendments, for short time in post-Reconstructionist Prince Edward County, opened the door to improve opportunities to participate in voting and other aspects of society in Prince Edward County. The 13th Amendment abolished slavery. The 14th Amendment gave citizenship and enforced laws of equality for short time. The 14th Amendment was not intended to address the color of skin, though, to abolish distinctions. In Plessy versus Ferguson, which proves problematic in this separate but equal paradigm, in 1896, the Supreme Court endorsed the doctrine of Supreme Court Justice Taney, undergirded the belief that one race was to be judged as inferior. Plessy was a shoemaker of mixed race who challenged the racial segregation laws by attempting to ride in an all-white car. Racial etiquette, expected behavior of blacks as they encountered whites, was a standard form of existence in the town of Farmville. This was reflected in a plethora of social norms, including separate restrooms, separate entrances to movie theaters and hotels and other public services. When creating these prints that you see in the hallway, that is in the permanent print collection at Georgetown University, the one entitled “Magnolia and Julia,” I remember being inspired by my great-aunt Julia and her sister, who taught in the Handman’s Sydney School there in Farmville. She actually spent 35 years pursuing her educational degree to keep pace with the sometimes elusive certification standards in both the segregated and later integrated school system. She was not allowed to attain the various teacher recertification offered at the Virginia State University within the city of Virginia. People of color were required to get their graduate certifications outside of the state of Virginia, so she often had to travel the summers to New York University. We are talking this morning about the circumstances that lead to the most significant student-led civil rights movement and the role of African-American mothers in imparting a desire for agency in their children with a liberatory sense of spirit that would rise them above their I will use, in my speaking oftentimes, images from the Moton Museum. My family in the 40s and 50s were immersed in the educational system in Farmville, both as students and as teachers. Moton High School is on one side of the road, and Branch, Mary Branch Elementary, is on the other side. That was where my folks taught. My mother’s name is in the teacher grade books that we found in the trunk, and so this is a close-knit community, and we’re seeing signs of their presence everywhere. The early teacher, normal school curriculums for teacher training were sometimes related, sadly, to only domestic service. If teachers married, they could no longer teach. There were Rosenwald schools that offered academic curriculums rooted in vocational training, as advocated by Booker T. Washington, but also accorded increasingly foundational educational studies, too. In 1925, the average expenditure for white students was $40 compared to black students, which was $10. The farming calendar impacted also some aspects of attendance in schools for blacks, and also the beliefs held by educational leadership about intellectual capacity. My great-aunts kept their rollbooks, and they portray studies in geography, penmanship, social studies, and arithmetic. Even Cardigy Woodson’s Negro History was included in the planning book, Plans. Their classrooms were sparsely lit. They were kept warm with pot-belly stoves, which gave uneven heat. Those closest to the pot-belly stoves would have to take layers of clothing off, while others had to layer up with coats. This was the daily life of my ancestors in Farmville. They were educated in tar-paper shacks, which are literally the same materials that we make of the chicken shacks. African-American organizations like the Martha Forrester Council of Women fought for the construction of a high school in about 1939, and they had to come up with some of the monies for this school. My great-aunt Julia was an active member of the Martha Forrester organization, but I think what’s really interesting is that the church and these organizations often in social action join together. The city of Farmville, prior to the construction of this high school, had no schools for African-American children in the city. The Emergent Civil Rights Movement in Prince Edward County and beyond charged organizations like Martha Forrester and First Baptist Church and other beloved community-based to attend to the inviolate construction of these chicken coops. They wanted them eradicated. They wanted them gone, more widely known as tar-paper shacks. The conditions were deplorable, with students not having the proper busing to even get there. One tragedy that happened before the student walkout in 1951 was that there was a bus that had to cross the railroad tracks in March of 1951, and it was a bus for the African-American students brought to Moton High School. And sadly, it was a foggy morning, and there was actually a safety patrol, if you could believe, who could not see the oncoming train. Tragically, five students were killed, and as you can imagine how this rocked this community, it really instilled in the students an active thought pattern, and I’m going to come back to that idea in a minute. I was going to show you First Baptist Church. My great-grandparents were actually founding members of the church. It was originally called First Baptist Church or Farmville Baptist Church. The physical building itself was brought by the blacks in the community in about 1867. L. Francis Griffin became the pastor there. He was admired by fellow community member Vernon Johns. People don’t often make the association of Vernon Johns to Dr. King, but Vernon Johns was actually replaced by Dr. King at Dexter Avenue Baptist Church. It was Vernon Johns’ niece Barbara Johns, Barbara Rose Johns, that made the Titanic and important shift to organize the students at Moton High School in protest of the unequal facilities. Barbara was born in New York. Her father earned land or owned land there in Dollington Heights, setting the tone for the student protests. In early 1951, the school board sent instructions to the Moton PTA that they were to stop attending the school board meetings. Barbara had befriended the music teacher within Moton High School, who had a close relationship with the principal. On the day of the student strike, Boyd Jones was asked or sent erroneously to take up a student who they thought was truant from the school, so he was gone from the building. Barbara wisely had gathered a group of student leaders to lead this protest. An announcement was made, and the students and teachers came to the auditorium of Moton High School. Bob Smith gives an accounting of that day, author Bob Smith, and he talks about a fellow student, John Stokes. He was one of the first students she confided in. He was vice president of the student council. John Stokes said of Barbara Johns, “She opened our eyes to a lot of things. I guess it was her environment that made her such a person. She was quiet and very slow-spoken. She talked to us just that way that day.” When the teachers refused to leave the auditorium, Barbara literally took off her shoe and hit the podium and asked them to leave. It was in that auditorium gathering that she appealed to the hearts and the minds of the students, and she so eloquently presented a dilemma. The dilemma was that if you were a teacher in that school, to stand and rise up against the conditions would have simply meant your job. If you were a parent in that community, it might have meant the dismemberment of your household, your land, whatever small, meager way of life that you had. It was just simply dangerous to speak up, and so it was the voice of a child that organized and created a spiritual center. I think of Barbara as a future mother who used her mother instincts before she physically became one. There is such a thing as a community and a social action mother, and I’m pretty sure that I can say that about Barbara Johns in that moment. When the student strike led to the walkout of the students that day, they were left with a dilemma of getting support. They turned to the NAACP, and they get Oliver Hill to take up the case. First, the fight was about facilities, but then what it became about was inequality in every aspect of public life. When I paint, I’m taking these things into the pew and the paint that I am using. Everything that you see out in the hall is a response to reading and meditating and contemplating that these ancestors, these mothers, these fathers, these sisters, these brothers, who, like my family, had to literally pick up and leave. Let me share with you that my grandmother was one of the 19 plaintiffs for the Brown decision, and true to what I’m saying, she had to pick up her family, and she had to leave. I have letters that indicate that legal juncture was taken against her and her family, and that meant that her guardian, her child, had to finish their schooling at Dunbar High School in Washington, D.C. So many students did. Kiddero College in North Carolina offered opportunities for students to take it up. The massive resistance led by Harry Byrd was mean, destructive, and resoundingly familiar in our times. The 16th Street Baptist Church bombing and this massive resistance, the death of Emmett Till, Medgar Evers, all of these sacrifices to deal with this issue of inequality. The chains on the school door in 1959 became the natter of the civil rights movement, and we see that with the locked doors, there is a second wave of protest that has to occur. 1,700 children are displaced by the locking of the doors in 1959. The students are no longer able to attend school. They are displaced. And so I want to also leave you with an idea of hope, because there are white people of many backgrounds, orientations, that did come in 1959 to help protest. One of them is called the American Friends Committee, and the American Friends Committee helped to place some of these children who were displaced in 1959. I’ll leave you with this thought. It was not until 1964 that the schools truly reopened in Farmville. This year, I will return back as a tribute to my parents, and I will have a solo exhibition of this work. I will carry this to Farmville. It’s my hope that I can speak... It's my hope that I can speak to other congregations like yourself, other public organizations and gatherings, and help to inform them about the critical importance of this. As we see student protesters, we need to stop, pause, and listen to what they're saying. They are the arbiters of the future that they have to live in. And just like the students in Farmville, they are blessed with a spiritual center that allows them to take that energy and use it for good. John used to always say, "Get in good trouble." Right? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time this morning.
If you want to show us, you want to change your slides. Did you want to briefly just show them?
Yes.
Why don't you do that? No, no, it's all right. So just briefly kind of flip them through. Just flip it over this way. No, it's great. It's really great.
Thank you. I'll just briefly show you some of the slides, and, you know, if I looked cool, I was nervous, right? Because I totally forgot to pick this up and change. You can start the slides now. But I wanted to show you these three books, or the two books, and my painting of grandmother. Katie Bigger was an amazing person. She is the one that was named in the Brown. She took the courage once the gathering had happened at First Baptist Church under L. Francis Griffin, and I wanted you to see that. I wanted you to also see this family tree. The earliest that we can go back is to my great-great-grandparents, Dinah and Peter Branch, and we know they were slaves. And the records marvelously are kept by my aunts and my mother and sisters. They have all passed now, and it's up to our generation to make sure that these pass on. And I have historical timelines in this presentation that help to explain. I talked about Henrietta writing her name for the first time in 1872. And so this is actually my making what we call a Siena type. And what I did was to take and make negatives of that early writing. So in our family, this document is the earliest writing, and it's out here in the hall, a copy of it as a Siena type. And these are three of the male siblings of the 17 children. Henrietta Hudson, Branch Hudson, is there in the upper left-hand corner. And the painting called Farmville Treasures was a reaction to finding the things in the farmhouse in 1989. I had to paint when I got home. It was so important to me to react. The china, the apple, the book called Negro Caravan were all things that came out of the farmhouse. The carnival glass were all things that the sisters had decided to put into this trunk. And by grace, we came to find these things in the farmhouse. I wanted to give you a sense of my aunt actively being a part of the school. This is her in the right-hand window, and this would be circa about, I would say, 1900. This is another piece that is in the hallway. This is a tribute to John Henry Hudson, and it's called "Founding Father." In my work, I like to kind of invert the way that people think about things. Why can't he be a founding father? He was of an entire generation. Being led by the Spirit is another creative way that I chose to combine. She saved, Julia Hudson saved Polaroids of her being coming mother of the church. And then there was another photo of the gospelier singers. So why are they choosing to save certain things? As an artist, I'm contemplating this by bringing these images together. And the last one, this last slide I'll show you for the moment, is Julia and Magnolia, and it's them in front of the Handan-Sidney School. And on the right is an example of the tar paper shacks. So again, I ask you to think about contributing to the Moton Museum. If you ever get down to Richmond, it's just a short hour and a half drive beyond Richmond to Farmville. It is one of the most important museums in our country, and they're doing some wonderful work. I'll give you a heads up that the National Archives is doing an online presentation that you can apply or register for on Wednesday evening at 7:00 p.m. Also, Moton Museum has some online programs that you might want. The website is phenomenal. I want to encourage you to look at that. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for having me.